Well, it's eight thirty. Let's start the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I'd like to start with invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anybody, anything on the agenda? Hearing none. Approval of agenda. Any chance to look through it? Approved is read. Consent agenda items. Is there any additions or corrections?
I do have an addition and a correction. The addition is the travel request that I set out in front of you this morning for Vicki and I to go to a budget workshop put on by our association at the end of June. And then in the human services report, the very first item, number seventeen dash oh one six A, the amount total forty-nine thousand five fifty-six is not correct. The decimal point is in the wrong place. It should be four hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents, and that is the amount also for, that's recommended for approval.
So the consent agenda items, approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personal action notices, approval of outside employment requests for approval, and approval of the human services report. I have a motion for those.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. Routine business. Approval of the claims.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on, department head reports. Bob, would you like to start?
Good morning. We had a zoning meeting on May second, and it went rather well. Went up to the, as late as they possibly could that day, and they accomplished everything. And, May fourth, we had a special zoning meeting where we had legal counsel come in and talk to the board about a legal matter before the board. And this weekend, May twentieth, we've got the Brookings County Veterans Smoke Detectors for Veterans event where my office is coordinating with Mike Holhauser's Veterans Office and trying to get smoke detectors out to veterans and families of people on active duty. There are some people signing up, but we could use a lot more people signing up if they need their smoke detectors checked or need new smoke detectors. We had a big meeting on May ninth about the city of Brookings, North Wellhead Field, and of course, we're interested in both Wellhead Fields, and we'll keep the board updated on that as we proceed on that one. I did attend a county fire meeting on May eleventh, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. Coming up, we've got a tri-state meeting. There is an LEPC meeting Thursday at Valero. And Saturday, we got the smoke detector installs. Sunday, I'm going out to Lake Campbell for the spring fling. They want an update on how to get notified for alerts and things like that. This morning, we had a thunderstorm come through, and I got the alert at two forty-five, and by the time I fired my computer up at home, the thunderstorm warning canceled out, so I didn't get that alert out this morning. But it was about two forty-five, and it canceled out about two fifty, up by Hendricks, Minnesota. Next week is Safety Week, and I'm sure Ms. Stephenson will discuss that more. And there's a possibility I'll have to go to DC for a Pipeline Advisory Committee in the first part of June. I'll keep the board informed on that. And then last but not least is the communications issue. We did have a meeting May eleventh at the East Fire Station. The discussion was led by, well, the people from the nine-one-one board was, it was all non-voting members, of course. It was Police Chief Jeff Miller, Brookings County Sheriff Marty Stanwick, Brookings Fire Chief Darryl Hartman, and myself. The main topics, the main thing that I got out of it is that the way that the local fire departments are toned out is causing an issue with them getting notified. And it almost sounds like they're stepping, when they send the tone out, it sounds like about the time that the fire departments are responding, that they got the tone, then dispatch is talking again, or sending out another tone or something. Somehow, they're, and they're gonna, they're gonna work on that. Bruce is reporting that the Onis Tower up north has improved reception in Bruce. Volga reports that they've got bad reception about three miles west of Volga. Up until then, they're doing pretty good. Elkton, they said they have two radios side by side, exact same. One will work fine, the other one will not. So what we did there is we had a short discussion on how to use a radio properly, and that might fix that one. White really likes the way the texts come out. Apparently, the nine-one-one center sends out texts, and White says they get the text basically no matter what, and that's how they typically respond, is through the text. Aurora, they've got the same tone problem that the other ones do. Aurora did say all their vehicles have got vehicle extenders, so if they can get inside the vehicles, then they got good coverage, because you gotta boost. One of the problems is some of the radios only got two and three watts, you know, and you're trying to reach thirty miles on a three-watt radio, it's just not, it's not gonna get it. Cyanide, they say that they're working fine. Bruce, the truck radios work all right. The talk-around locally works all right. They do have some feedback after transmitting. The county fire departments use a county VHS, VHF channel. And Chief Miller, at the end, did offer that himself, Chief Hartman, and myself would, in a week or two, go out to each one of these local fire departments and do our own radio tests with the handhelds and the radios that we actually use, and then report back to the nine-one-one commission. And then continuing off from last commission meeting, the water tower antenna. I do plan on approaching VanTech, who put the first antenna up, and I talked to them. I know there was some discussion about was we gonna lose strength in the signal by lowering the tower, and he said he didn't think it'd be much loss. There might be a minimal loss, but, and I'll, I understand that if there's a way of keeping the same strength and just lowering the tower, I'll look on that avenue, too. So, any questions?
Commissioner Bartley, you'd say if there's a chance that the antenna, a better one or more range, if the price is reasonable to look at doing it? Mike brought that up to me. Can you give a little background why, all of a sudden, the tower was too?
Well, yes. Apparently, you know, we, back in two thousand thirteen, when I took over emergency manager, we had an issue, and we put the towers in, the north tower, and then we feed her on the south side. And apparently, I don't know what happened if no one told them how high it could be, or whatever. But all of a sudden now, a company called Verizon's coming in and mapping all the antennas on all the water towers, and apparently, there's an FFA limit on how tall an antenna can be. And if it's taller than that, you can request a waiver, or you can lower the antenna, and it's a lot easier to lower the antenna than it is to try to get FFA waiver, from what I was told. So, as far as fault, I don't necessarily see a fault. I mean, there's other antennas up there that have, having to be lowered, too. It's not just, they're not just singling out the emergency management antenna. There's another, another organization's got a tower, antenna's gotta be lowered. And you can't just take a chainsaw and cut off three feet of the tower antenna, unfortunately. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Morning.
Morning.
We'll be short and sweet. Just a reminder again to the board that SDAO conference is coming up very fast. Opening ceremonies are going to be May thirty-first from nine to ten-thirty, and I sent everybody letters, but Larry, I'm waiting on a response from you if you would like to come and welcome our association on behalf of the county board. So if you would let me know for that.
I'll stop, though.
Oh, okay. And then also, the banquet, I doubt the board would wanna come to the conference, but the banquet you're all invited to as well, and that's what those letters were for. If you RSVP to me if you'd like to come and attend the banquet, it's twenty-five dollars for the meal and entertainment and all that stuff. As far as our office goes, haven't heard any words on appeals to OHE or Circuit Court at this point. I'm hoping that goes away. But again, we have until the nineteenth is our deadline. Department of Revenue is working on our abstract. They're working on all of them, and they're not gonna release them until they get them all in, but they're gonna be released on a first-in, first-out, and ours was in way early, so hopefully, we'll have that approved before too long. I actually got a letter today, and I was hoping it was my factor approval, but it was not. It was a contract for our teacher for school I had to sign, so. And other than that, we are continuing with our rural review, and that's going pretty well. We're pounding through a lot of properties out there, weather permitting, so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Morning.
You should have received in your packet the finance officer's report for April, and the be-it-noted items, the auditor's account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives total, and the highway expenditure report, and also the register of deeds statement. They're all be-it-noted items. And also, we have to have an action item for the general fund surplus transfers, or general fund highway transfers and emergency management. So we do need a motion for that. I don't know if you wanna do that after my report, or what, but we do need that for the...
Do it now. We just will...
Okay.
No.
I'll move.
Got a motion and a second? Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And if you looked at the report for the surplus cash for general fund, we are at forty-five percent. So we are higher than a lot of years. When we take out the transfers to highway and to emergency management, if we would've done that this month, it would've taken it down to thirty-nine percent. But we're still in good shape with that, so we're, we're doing good there. And also, in your packet, was a list of the surplus items, and what didn't sell on the sale, how it was disposed of, and that is something that we need to keep track of and have in the minutes for the auditors. So there is your list. And in the minutes, we're just going to put that, the list is available in our office, so we don't have to have all the publishing costs. So, but there's the list for your, so you can look at that. And one thing, in talking to the auditors, I figured out, according to Chris's abstract, which hasn't been approved yet, but I figured out the growth for the county was one point six percent, and that would be able, we would be able to increase the taxes for general fund by two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand six fifty-eight. That doesn't include utilities, which we won't have till the end of August, and that would be if the abstract is approved by the state. So that's the good news. The bad news on that is, in talking to the auditors, we met with Brenda, Stacy and I did, last week, and one thing that they wanna see on our audit is compensated absences. And what that is, is if anybody should quit, it would be the payout for sick leave and vacation and that type of thing. So the total last year for compensated absences was three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. So if we do have to put that in the budget, that will take care of all of our growth in CPI. So we are still talking to the auditors. It is something that is never gonna happen, so every department would have, you know, like, commission is at twenty-thousand. Jail is at thirty-seven thousand. That would be added to their budget, and it is something that we would never have to pay out. So we are kind of working to see if there's a way around it, but they said it is a potential of material in the audit. So we may have one of the auditors come and talk to you, too, and see what you wanna do with that, but just to kind of bring it up so you're aware of, we may have to be doing that in the upcoming audit.
Is the issue that we need to have a number in there for the accrued vacation and sick leave?
Yes.
Not, not what we anticipate that we'll pay out in that budget here?
Right, right. Yes. So that is something different that we've never done before, so, and it would be quite a hit to the budget. So we will kind of keep you updated on that, but just to kind of give you an idea that this possibly could be coming for this budget cycle.
The other concern that I had with that was if you put thirty thousand extra dollars into departmental-level budgets, it looks as if, and then that doesn't get spent, it'll roll back into fund balance, and we have no intention of spending it. However, it's taking away from essential services to the tune of, you know, three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. So we're gonna do some more checking to see. This has never been necessary in the past, and so why, all of a sudden, now is it necessary to have that amount? And we would have to have that amount budgeted. We would have to, it'd be a learning curve for departments as well, because they would see this amount as a separate object-level line item in their budgets with the intent not to spend it.
That's crazy. That completely defeats everything we have worked so hard to not have extra money in their budgets.
And that's just, that's just exactly what we said. We've, you know...
We have, we've worked diligently to get their budgets...
To a good point, because we really, yes, last year, we used quite a bit of contingency. And like with Clyde's payout, looking back, you know, we didn't realize he was going to be retiring when he was, but if we knew, we should budget for that.
Right.
When we knew somebody's gonna retire, but at that point, we didn't know. So, but we are really good with our budget right now, so I hate to see it go the opposite direction again.
Absolutely. I think that's a new auditor thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is something with the, with the new auditors now, because it has always been something that they've looked at, but it's never been a necessary journal entry for the auditors to make at the end of, when they're doing the audits in the past. They've never needed to make it as a journal, so it's never been an issue in the past, is my understanding of it, so.
Right, and I understand that, too, but they said there is a potential issue in the future. So we'll have to look at it and see if that is something that we need to do for sure, or if not.
Stand strong, ladies. We've worked hard to get where we are.
Yeah.
But then, if somebody leaves, their payout for their sick leave and their vacation time comes out of that one item, okay?
Yep. It does, but it's just, if you're figuring three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, I don't think we're gonna have everybody leave all at the same time. So, I mean, it's not very likely that we're gonna use much of that money at all. So it's just gonna sit in the budget.
Vicki, that three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand was over how many years? I mean, that's cumulative of everybody's payout?
Yes, it's everybody's payout, and it's what we figured for two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. What have we actually, do we have any idea what we've actually had to pay out annually? I know it's included in the payroll budgets, it'd be hard to probably figure it out.
It does vary. Probably with Clyde's, we had the biggest payout, and, you know, we've, we usually pay out anywhere from twenty to a hundred thousand in a year. And a hundred thousand probably happens once in twenty years.
Would it be reasonable to expect that we could prorate that somehow in a budget process, that say, a hundred thousand a year would be a top figure, even fifty thousand a year in the budget, rather than three-hundred-and-fifty-seven, and carry over every time? Is that a possible accounting?
Again, we'll have to talk to the auditors, but yeah, I'm exactly thinking along those same lines. If we have to put something in there, I can sure understand it, but it's hard to put that whole amount in.
All right. I think if we could look historically over a five-year period and...
And see what we've spent.
See what we've spent, and then put that into the line item in each department's budgets, might be a more reasonable approach if that's acceptable to the state auditors.
Right. We'll keep you updated. We'll be having budget hearings soon, so we'll keep you updated. And we have all the department's budgets in, so we are working on that. So we will be ready for budget hearings next month, and we'll hopefully get everything to Michelle, so the books can be put together, so.
I just have a question on the auction report. I think this is the second year now that we've been doing the internet...
Yes.
...auction process. In that report, when it says that an item was sold, I think our report needs to say who the buyer was, and that that is a public information issue, and that that should be set forth there in case there's any issues that need to be looked at.
Sure, we can do that. We can just add that in and bring it next time, so.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Marty?
Morning.
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 Well, things are busy. Law enforcement keeps the state's attorney's office, and the state's attorney's office keeps my office busy. So, had a couple of emergency committals in the last few days also, so we continue to stay busy. Good news, my canine officer and his partner buddy got recertified in Sioux Falls last week. And while they were there, one of the schools requested a search of their parking lot, one of the high schools. So then, since they're training, so they, all the trainees went and searched the parking lot, and Buddy went through about a hundred cars and didn't find anything. But to test the dog, to make sure the dog's still on task, they, they put a cotton swab, or a cotton ball, in one of the trailer hitches of a pickup with the scent of cocaine, and Buddy hit on it just like that. So, and, so he was recertified, no problems there. One of the other municipality's dog didn't get certified, so that sometimes does happen. So our, our dog continues to still be, I always say the dog's smarter than the deputy. It's because the dog knows what the drugs are, but gotta make sure that the deputy knows what that, how that dog alerts and knows how to do that, so.
So does he, does he alert differently for different drugs?
No, it's basically the same, but it's just the way he alerts, or I should say, he's, he's a stop and stare. But there's still some, when, when they're going around the cars and going around things, there's some things that may indicate that he's getting on something, so the deputy has to watch that, and then, there's a lot to it that I don't even know, because I don't go through the training. But when, when he locks up, when he sits and locks up, and sometimes he stands and locks up, then, then you know he's got a good, strong hit. Hit, you know, so. So that was, that, that was, that was good. Also, and I didn't put in a travel request, because I didn't think about it, is that I'd like to send a deputy to Watertown this Friday, this coming Friday. Watertown is, this is the second, I believe, the second annual that they have a law enforcement parade, and they have welcomed law enforcement from the area to come and put a vehicle or whatever in the parade, and they have, and I guess last year, it was pretty well-attended by the surrounding towns, and so I guess I'd like to send a unit there to, probably a couple hours' time they get there and go through the parade, so if that's okay with the commission to send a deputy over there to represent Brookings. So we'll do that, then. The other thing is, is that I just got notification last week that the president put money in cops grants, and so what I'd like to do is that I would like to apply, because in my budget for this, for this year, and of course, in my strategic plan, I have that in there to increase staff, and so I'd like to apply for that cops grant if the commission is okay with that. That doesn't mean that you have to approve it. If you just, I don't wanna start the process if you guys shut me off right now. But in my budget, I am asking for an additional deputy, and I'm not prepared to give you the reasons and the justification today. That'll be something I'll do in my budget hearing. But I do have a couple, I have one other funding source other than this, but, but I guess if the cops grants are out there, it's, it's three-year grant, it's seventy-five, twenty-five. So I think it's a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars through the community policing grant for three years. So I guess I'm just looking for permission to apply, and I would like to, if I get that permission, I would like to get ahold of Todd Case from First District. He helped me before on the grant, and, and I'm sure he'll be willing, that's what you guys pay for anyway, so we might as well use that. The last time we got a cops grant, Todd wrote the grant, or helped, helped write the grant on it. He did most of the work, but, and that's how, I've been, over the eighteen years I've been sheriff, I've been able to increase staff by two, and that's both those was on cops grants. You know, one of my biggest hurdles right now is that a lot of times, I only have one deputy out, and it's getting to be too much. You know, two weeks ago, I remember it was last Saturday or the Saturday before, we had that incident in White, where it started in Esteline and carried over to White, and there was, there was a knife involved in it, but there also was a firearm involved, and the deputy requested backup. The city police was not able to send anybody right away, so we had to call the next deputy out. It took a little while for him to get there, but the deputy, you know, was able to handle, handle the situation. But it's just, we're getting a lot more calls for service that are more violent-type calls, and so, but I'll go into my justification later. What I'm looking for is permission to apply. That doesn't mean you have to, you have to pay it at the final.
I think you got that. Go ahead.
Go ahead and apply?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. One of the biggest things is my contract hours. I have to provide ninety-eight hours a week contract time. They, they pay a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars a year to pay for two-point-five deputies. So, and again, I'll go through more of this at budget time. Other than that, we're just kept busy with routine calls. We had our first, my first bee call, I got Bob involved, too. We got some bees over by hives near the road by Bruce, and a person went through there that's allergic to bees and got stung. Now I got a second complaint, and, so that's my first bee complaint.
It's not a good experience on a motorcycle, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I bet not. So, which, I call the state. There's no regulations on where they put their hives close to the roads or things like that. We are gonna call the owner of the bees and see if we can figure something out. So, anyway, that's all I got.
All right. Any other questions? Dick, you wanna, just wait, we have a nine o'clock scheduled agenda item here. Couple minutes.
Couple minutes. I don't know for sure, but Sean informed us this morning that the video was probably not working today, so it probably will not be on TV. They're trying to fix it right now, so. Okay, it's nine o'clock. Like to open a public hearing on the renewal of retail on-off sale malt beverage license for the Corner Gas and Goodies, White, South Dakota, for licensing year July one, two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Start with opponents, if there's any opponents that would like to speak. Again, is there any opponents that would like to speak? Hearing none, move on to proponents. Any proponents that would? Okay. Hearing done. Move on to, close the public hearing and go on to the discussion, possible action to approve the renewal of retail on-off sale malt beverage license for the Corner Gas and Goodies, White, South Dakota, for licensing year July one, two thousand seventeen to June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. I guess, discussion? Have a motion or?
What was the law enforcement issue this year on, on this applicant?
Marty, can you, I guess, do I need a, need a motion to discuss?
I'll move approval for discussion purposes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for discussion purpose?
Does anybody here?
Marty, do you have background on that, or? Okay.
And there's no one here appearing, the applicant's?
Chris is here, remember the halfers?
How many violations in the last licensing year?
One.
One?
It's right on our, it's in our packet.
Yeah, she's in here, okay, it's right down here. So, every year.
I guess, Chris, would you come forward if there's any questions? You can probably answer them, but just turn the mic on and introduce yourself. Okay.
I'm Christina Luna from the Corner Gas and Goodies in White. There's been one violation last year.
Was that the same person? We had this conversation last year.
Nope, not the same person.
And had this person gone through the training?
Nope, I still haven't had my people go through the training.
You do not have any of your people go through the training?
Nope, and actually, the one, I found out the one that did it the year before had gone through the training at a different job. Not through me, but they, she actually had.
Okay. In the state, I'm sure, any violation, you had to follow through with the state?
Yep.
Completed all that?
Yep.
I have a question for the sheriff. Sheriff, do you know if there's been any law enforcement activity where they passed?
Oh, yes.
They do on occasion, it's?
I don't have any big concerns.
It's a bit, you know, it's a busy store, and they have some comings and goings there, and it would just, you know, we do compliance checks twice a year. They don't get it every time, it's every other time, but they've passed checks. So, it's just, it always feels like that they, they check everybody, but that one they don't. It's my little, our underager.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just have something that I would like to say, and that is underage consumption of alcohol is a serious problem in Brookings County. This applicant was in last year. We said to this applicant that she need to comply with state law and have her people do training. It is not a burden to have the people do training. It's my understanding that is an online training process to have those people become certified. And I don't think somebody that has a fifty percent fail rate when law enforcement goes there is taking serious the laws of the state of South Dakota as relates to alcohol enforcement, and I don't think she should have a license. She obviously didn't listen to us the last two times that she was in here. And if half of the time that law enforcement's doing a compliance check, that she's, someone is selling to an underage person, then half of the time that they're selling, when there is no law enforcement compliance check going on, there may be an issue as relates to underage enforcement. I, I just see this as a serious problem that this applicant does not take seriously.
If we were to grant you your license again, and, and I'm, I'm very hesitant to take away that income for you, would you assure us that you would have your employees take the online training?
Yes, I will do my best. I mean, it's, you know, obviously, it's not a state law, but yes, I will get them to do it, and me.
Okay.
I think it'd be in your best interest to have them take the training.
It would, because I, I can assure you that those of us that are sympathetic at this point will not be if you come back again.
I understand.
And I have a question, do we have any flexibility when we license? Does it have to be for a year? Can we do it for a shorter period of time than that? It is a year, okay?
Do we have the ability to add any contingencies to the licensing, such as this particular training? We don't have that ability.
I don't believe we do.
Do we have any statistics or data at all in, in the cases of underage consumption in the county in particular in that area? It's traceable back to the purchase of alcohol, whether it was a compliance check or not, traceable back to this particular source for the purchase of the alcohol for minors? Hard to get that information, I imagine. And that's the difficult part, is you don't know exactly the extent of this license's use for juveniles.
When you say the license is good for a year, is there, anyway, like you talk about a contingency, that if this person would fail again, can, upon the failure of the check, could the license be void immediately at that time?
The state does, has some kind of action, do they not? I, I mean, you, you already got in quite a bit of trouble for failing again, didn't you? And the next time, will they take your license?
I don't know their process, it doesn't tell you the next step, it just tells you what you have to do now.
I, I think that the state acts on it.
I think they come in and just close you down for like three months or something.
I think it's something like that.
Your second violation in a year.
What, what action did they take, the state?
Just a big fat fine.
How much?
Two thousand dollars.
Okay, no suspension of your license for a period of time?
Nope.
And no advice to you as to whether if another violation, it would be greater?
Nope, they just said it doubles every time, is what, if it's more than, depending on the time period, like the fine doubles. And I'm assuming after, I don't know how many, then, you know, then your license is, it doesn't tell you that.
I think after the second, they'll take your, because we had an issue in Volga with one of the convenience stores, and then they lost their license. We had to monitor it. But it'd be beneficial to, to have your employees take that, because they're a little more lenient with you if you take that, those courses.
Does the clerk get fined also, don't they, or?
The what?
The, the person that sold, the clerk?
Yeah, they have to go to court, they actually have to go to court, and it goes on their permit record, and they get fined, and, yep.
Why don't, if it happens, again, I don't think we'll have to do anything, because I believe the state will step in and take care of it.
Okay.
I'm kinda new to this, but at this particular point in time, I'm inclined to approve the license, but I certainly wouldn't be in the future if this continues on an annual basis to have violations. I hate to take anybody's source of revenue away from them in a business without giving them an opportunity. It appears we've had three opportunities at this point, and this could be a fourth. But I think it would be hard for me to approve this in the future if, if you don't get the training and you don't pass the compliance checks.
I guess, three years in a row kinda sums it up for me a little bit here. I'm leaning towards the end here, that how many times do we give you an opportunity? I understand, you know, but all, you know, your employees sometimes will do stuff, and you can't control them, watch them all the time. But ultimately, they're your responsibility, and not having them go through the training after you're here last year kinda rubs me a little bit the wrong way, of you're working to make this better. So, I'm, I'm not a big fan of taking away, you know, your opportunity, but I think it's a two-way street. I think we provide the opportunity to sell alcohol, but you have to also comply, and that's why we do these things. That's why we do the testing, and, you know, it's three years in a row. So, I'm gonna vote not to approve it, basis on that. Not something I like to do, but sometimes there's gotta be consequences, I guess, so.
Only other thing I, I think involved is, I'm sure when they complete the online training, they get a certificate of some sort.
I'm assuming.
If they would go forward and do the training, could you provide us copies of the, of the, of their training, just to show that it's being done? I guess, have possible action to approve, would you like to call a roll, please?
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
No.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
No.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Don't come back again.
Try not.
Moving on, I guess, Dick, would you like to report?
Good morning.
Morning.
First thing is, I'd like to visit a little bit about the non-detour route near the bridge north of Bruce. We've been getting some people, obviously, it's all local traffic that is not using the assigned, in the construction contract, the, the assigned detour route. And so, they're looking for if the county will help improve this non-detour route. It's, it's approximately four miles in length total. But I guess one thing we've tried to do during the construction season, we've had our blade go up there and address the real bad spots. Obviously, the, to our knowledge, anyway, the township has not did any blading on that route at all. But I think they're looking more for additional gravel and also some shaping and whatever to improve it. I guess what I've been telling the township board person that calls is that the state doesn't recognize the need to improve or do anything on this particular route simply because their concern is the assigned detour route, which they've been addressing and, and also they've been contacting us to take care of. It's one of them unfortunate things, I guess it is up to the board to decide whether you would want to expend county funds on, on a township road. The bridge should be done, hopefully, by the end of June. There's no guarantee on that, but they poured the deck last Thursday, and so they've got a lot of dirt work and the road work to do yet. But they're looking for the end of June as a deadline. One thing I did share with the township guys, I said it's really not in our best interest to do anything until the project is done, because I can see the writing on the wall that if you do it ongoing, it gets to be a higher level of expectations that they have. And also, well, you, you fixed it up that one time, but really, it's back to where it was before. Again, it's very similar to what other issues we've had, but if, if the county would expend funds on a township road, that would be up to the board to approve if it's okay or not okay. So, I don't think he wants an immediate answer. I just told him I'd bring it to the board's attention, but I guess maybe at the next meeting, we should decide if that would be a, something we'd wanna go with or not. The next thing is Aurora'd like to borrow some barricades for their celebration in Aurora, and I don't see a problem with it. I just mentioned that should there be a storm event or whatever, we would have to have them back immediately. And also, we would need to set a date, hopefully today, to have our public meeting for the five-year plan for our two hundred, our two thousand eighteen bridge grants. And probably, I think Stacy suggested maybe June twentieth would be a good date to do that. And before that happens, we'll have our, our planning, and we'll also have our budget meeting. So, if anything would change before that date, we would need that time to issue, you know, because we have to publish that in the paper and everything before the meeting. So, the sooner the better, but the latest would be like June twentieth would be a time to do that. And unfortunately, June thirteenth is my budget hearing, so I don't think budget-wise, it'll be necessary to actually go through the budget to see what we're gonna have in the five-year plan, because the five-year plan basically just, as long as it's in the plan, it's eligible for a grant. That, that's the main purpose of our five-year plan, from a formal standpoint, not from a strategic planning standpoint. So, were you gonna talk about that too later, or?
Just, yeah, and I'd put that in as part of my report too, is setting that time for that public hearing. You know, we're looking at June twentieth, it's that, it would be part of a routine commission meeting. We wouldn't, it wouldn't be at a, you know, we'd, we'd set a specific time for it, but it wouldn't be at a special meeting per se, so.
When, when is that? When do we have to have our public hearing done? What is our deadline?
Can be done anytime, it just has to be done by the first of January.
So, we can do it anytime? I, I read that in, in the packet documents, and that, I, that wasn't my understanding, I thought we had to have it done sooner than that, but.
Don't we have, aren't, aren't grants due August?
That's for preliminary engineering, so yeah, we would have to have.
We would really need to have that public hearing and the five-year plan approved, so we could submit preliminary engineering grants by August first.
But, but here is the problem with doing it on, on June twentieth, and maybe we'll have all of that done by then. But last year and the year before, we had some changes in that five-year plan. Once we saw it, there were some things that we wanted to switch around. I wanna be sure that as a commissioner, I have an opportunity to look at that, we have a chance to discuss it, and we got time before our, our public hearing to have a second meeting on it, make sure we got it right. I don't think we can say now, I'm, I agree that we should pick our date, but if we're only going to have one meeting before the twentieth, are we going to have everything done, and do we need our budget stuff before? When, when are we going to talk as a commission about what we wanna have on our five-year plan and what things that we wanna get accomplished? And I've asked this question before, like on, on two thirteen, when are we gonna have the two thirteen conversation? If we're gonna get that in the budget or not?
We're not.
Yeah, when, when are, when are we talking about where are we going and, and which smaller structure should be on our plan? That kind of thing. But I don't want us just to put numbers in a plan and say it's not, it's just formally important, not strategically important. But I don't want us just to put numbers in a plan and say it's not, it's just formally important, not strategically important. I want us to have one plan that encompasses what we think.
Yes, but always keep in mind, that's a living, breathing document, subject to change at all times.
I, and I'm fully aware of that and I'm comfortable with that. But I don't wanna just put numbers in there without us having looked at where we're going with our, our roads and bridges.
I think once that discussion come, when Dick brings his plan forward.
I would suggest you have significant discussion on it as part of the public hearing.
Right.
That's why you have the, the public hearing is to have the discussion on the document. You don't wanna make all of your decisions before the public hearing and then just simply approve it at the public hearing. The public hearing is for discussion purposes.
And we'll be discussing it at, at the time we have our budget hearing with him. So that's when we discuss what we want in addition to what we discussed during the.
Also, we'll be certifying that plan at a later date. But part of that certification process, you have to show that you've had your public meeting. So I think everybody's got good comments. I think we just need to set a date for that meeting that we can do within the parameters necessary to get it all done by August fifteenth.
So everyone is in agreement that we can have our public hearing on our five-year plan? And we can make substantial changes to it after the meeting, if we, after the public hearing, if we so choose to do? And we don't need another public hearing? Is that what I just heard?
Changes were made last year to it.
Yeah.
Well, we, we made a formal amendment, but that was because we had already certified the plan.
Yeah.
That was one thing I think we learned was don't certify it so early. The other thing is for the public, um, to be, uh, able to comment and whatever, uh, again, that is something that maybe wouldn't necessarily require a change in plan. It could be, cause it could be significant. But on the other hand, it could be just, uh, a situation where we take their input and then we compile the plan and certify it at a later date.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to the question that I had, which is when do we have to have it done? I'm sure, I'm not sure I, I don't understand that.
Yeah.
August, what is the date that we need to have it done?
Fifteenth.
So August fifteenth?
Mm-hmm.
August fifteenth, we have to have it to the Department of Transportation if we're applying, well, we have to, right?
Yes.
And specific for any grant.
Mm-hmm.
So if we work backwards from that date and, and come up with when we as a commission are going to have a, uh, a good, solid conversation on where we're going with our roads and bridges. And part of what, when do we get our, um, unstructured bridge report? Is that not until November? When will we get the smaller structures, I'm sorry?
Oh, that, that comes in November.
So we're not going to have that when we're making our decisions?
And also this year, you'll have the six structures that were put on a one-year annual cycle. That will be November first too. Now, the structures shorter than twenty feet don't have to be sent to the state. They're sent, they're working just for us. But the ones on the annual review have to go to the state by November first, so.
And our smaller structures, even though they don't have to be on the five-year plan, if we don't put them on the five-year plan, how do we know that that's what we're planning on doing? Where are we keeping track of that?
Mm-hmm.
They are on the, they are on the five-year.
Yeah.
Exactly. But when do we have and what is our process? Is Dick going to come at the time of the budget hearing? Cause we put all of our capital stuff at the same time as the budget hearing. Is he going to bring a list of his proposed, uh, upcoming things for five years to, to the budget meeting?
Yep.
And then along with a proposed five-year plan? And then we'll have a chance to talk to him about that at the budget hearing on the fourteenth?
Yep. Mm-hmm.
And, and then everybody thinks we'd be ready for our public hearing on the twentieth? It just seems to me that that's pretty quick. And I'm, I'm wondering if we wouldn't do better to have our public hearing at the next meeting after that? I'm just throwing that out.
Certainly doesn't, uh, matter just so that we leave ourselves, like you say, work backwards from that date. So that we certainly cover all the publishing and whatever requirements.
Just, just a comment, I guess. One thing I would like when we have this discussion is the projects that are planned, okay, that are coming? And how we're paying for them and what our responsibility is and if we've budgeted for that already.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That, that's the thing that I kinda have a tough time getting my hands around is we have a bridge over north of Bruce that's been on the budget for three years. And we're gonna owe some money for that, a certain percentage, twenty-five percent or ten percent or whatever it is. But we've budgeted for that and where's that at? Is that in the general fund? Where's, where's those funds? And so, um, cause we're, we're getting a lot of projects. We're doing a lot of them. I mean, we're, we're investing a lot of money in infrastructure and it takes years to do that. Um, and we're getting them on the docket, but I just kinda wanna get a running list of where we're at and the funds that we're gonna need to come up with when we need to. And if it's budgeted already, great, we've got the money set aside. But if it's not, we gotta be careful spending too much on, on the other side that we haven't spent money already spent.
Correct.
And so if there's some way to put that together of the projects in the list and we've already budgeted or not, we've got the funds that, you know, we're good to go, that would help on the planning process. Because we have a lot of big-ticket items that are potentially could come up. And, and I think the long-term planning and decision-making for that is important. And, and obviously, one of my focuses is the, the bridges and the roads is an important part too, so.
Right. It's all in my budget stuff.
Yeah.
You just gotta.
And Dick's got, I mean, that's a tough deal to do. You don't know when that project's gonna be completed and when all of a sudden, we're gonna need the money. I mean, it's.
But there's also, yeah. And there's also another line that we've created, uh, that's for grant matching funds. You'll see that's in there. There's also a category where I label exactly what would be, uh, need to be accrued for future ones. And there, but the, probably the biggest, uh, dilemma we've got is we're working very diligently to try to get those two bridges south on seventy-seven to be, uh, awarded a grant in two thousand eighteen. And then we still have to coordinate that the construction, the environmental, all the stuff that takes a lot of time can be done together. And it'll be a huge savings for Brookings County overall than if they go through separately. So that's in my budget too. You'll just, yeah, whenever they get it.
It'll be a hu, it'll be a huge savings for us and the state.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, they, they can see it too. We just gotta make sure that we've got our Ts dotted and our Is crossed so that it hopefully goes through, so.
And then another question, I guess I would look at your expertise. If we wanted to, you know, we have that bridge now that's over on the Sinai Road, I guess I call it all the time now. That has been decreased way down. Um, and if we wanted to accelerate that, um, is there a way to look at, um, your budget? And maybe look at your program for overlaying and some different things? I've talked with Commissioner Jensen a little bit about it. Um, he's brought it up that do we put a hold on, on something of, that may not need it right away? That we could maybe take those funds and put them directly to, to a bridge to be able to do that?
I guess, I guess what, the way I've constructed and developed my budget was leaving everything the same. So you're gonna see a significant increase in my budget just for the things you're talking about. That'd be the board's decision whether you wanna give and take or take from Peter to pay Paul, however you wanna describe it. But initially, to, uh, present my budget to you, I'm going with just, we've got a good plan and the reason we do it this way. And so when these added costs, uh, and to answer your question directly, I did that. I put money into, we wanna definitely do the preliminary engineering on that one on twelve as soon as possible. Because every time we do something with our own funds immediately, we, we eliminate one year of wait. And that's where this grant process comes in, that we, if we've got time, fantastic. If we don't have time, these are what have to take place. So you'll see in my budget that I increased, um, professional services. And I also increased the amount that we will have to match these grants if they go through. Probably when we get to our budget or if you get a chance, Ryan, give me a call, uh, when you see it. And if you got some specifics, that would certainly make it a much better conversation that day on the thirteenth, uh, to go through that stuff. Because that's, uh, what I initially, uh, set up. So if, if narration doesn't seem clear to you, just give me a call and, and we'll try to, to work through it. But that's what I did, so yes, I'm, I'm.
And also keep in mind on twelve, I believe there's another bridge that's posted also.
Right, we're gonna.
Try to work, I mean, we need to do them both, not just do one, I mean.
Yeah. And we're gonna mill, we're gonna mill some of that off and we'll be able to raise the, the limits on that a little bit, which will help the locals down there. But I'll, I'll cover that later in my, my report.
How much time have we given Dick on the, um?
Leanne, just, we have a nine-thirty scheduled.
Oh.
Sorry.
We'll ask you back, we'll ask you back up, yeah. I'd like to go to our nine-thirty AM Aurora Mayor Fred Weeks. Um, action to approve resolution number seventeen dash twenty-two. A resolution approving annexation of territories by the city of Aurora.
Move approval?
Second.
I get a motion in a second, uh, discussion. Fred, if you'd like to introduce yourself and.
Fred Weeks, Mayor of Aurora. This is gonna be kinda south of town on our new development. Twenty-seven to twenty-eight houses in this one here. And the gentleman's plan is once this one's done, they go to the next phase. And there's give or take seventy acres back there. And all seventy will be developed by the same gentleman in, in the process. And Aurora just seems to be, it's just growing. We even, we haven't got the Mill Park one done. We haven't got sewer in there yet and there's already four houses that are sold in that lot and eleven lots sold. So it's, it just keeps on growing, so this is just a start here.
Is there any opposition whatsoever to that?
No, he was the only one that had to sign anything because he owns everything.
Oh, he owns it all?
Yeah, he owns it all beforehand.
Okay. Okay.
Have any other discussion, questions? Call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on, next item is with Aurora also. Discussion on moving a speed warning sign at the north end of Broadway and County Road twenty-three. Look for motion.
With the development of Mill Park, the speed sign is gonna be three blocks too far down. Well, we, so we annexed that eleven acres in two years ago, I think. But it was never developed, so we never had to move anything. Now that is gonna be developed. So actually, the speed warning sign and the speed limit sign should be moved north.
I believe we'll have to do a resolution to moving that sign, won't we?
Yeah. And that, it isn't something that has to be done now because we're just putting sewer and water in there. The first house probably won't go in there until July. So, yeah, I mean, we have time and just something I wanted to bring up before there was people to start moving in that it was done or could be done.
What, uh, where would you recommend? Or Dick, would you have some input also on removing the speed zone north farther?
Somewhere around the Weber Farm, I would think. Yeah. Well, uh, yeah, I think if somebody decides to go back in there, Mill Park is done this year. I mean, he's, this is his last little phase. He has eighty lots back there. But Weber, I think, is willing to sell the back lots. There's more land back there. I think eventually it's still gonna go that way, but we're talking probably four or five years down the road. And with the eighty lots that are back there and the new street that's gonna come out there, I think we'll be sufficient there. So we won't ask for a new street, for anybody to build a new street until after that, this addition is done.
Okay. I think it'd be best if Dick and Fred, you guys look at where it'd be the best and have a. Terry, could you draft up a resolution to address the situation? If approved, I mean.
And I think we should look at the sooner the better just for the factors of construction equipment coming in it. You know, we, if you're gonna annex it in and it's gonna be city, we need to probably change the speed limit to bring them.
That part, that part is annexed and they're ready.
Right. Oh, that's right.
Yeah, that's already done.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we're looking at pretty close, we're getting into closer to Valero out there also, I mean.
Yeah.
So.
Be a good situation for. Be a good situation for the city of Aurora to just take that road over and then they could have all those decisions right at their fingertips. So noted.
No, I, I think it's a good idea. Obviously, the city's grown to the north and the, the signs are, I guess, outdated now in their location. So if we move them back to maybe that, uh, two-thirteenth or something, I'm not sure exactly where they're at there, but if you start slowing them down by two-thirteenth and Valero, I guess I'm not interested in making the whole stretch thirty or thirty-five.
No.
Um, by any means, but just putting the warning signs a little further out and.
I just wanna so when they're in, actually in town there that there's actually twenty-five, you know?
Yeah.
How fast they hit there. But now thinking about it, going south there with that piece that you just annexed in, we're having another road come out of there too.
Mm-hmm.
Ah, I have to look at that sign. Well, maybe I can meet with Dick someday and we can look, go south too and make sure that sign's in the right spot. Cause there's gonna be another road coming out of there too.
That'd be nice if we can do them both at the same time.
Well, when we meet on the north, on the north one, we can just go down south and look at that one too. Cause I basically know where I want, well, where I want the road. That doesn't mean it's gonna go there, but I basically know where the road's gonna be, so we can look at that one too.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just got about ten minutes more. Dick, you wanna come back? We can finish.
And I was just asking, how much time have we given Dick on our schedule on the thirteenth or the fourteenth, whichever day he's on?
Let me, let me.
I think it's forty-five minutes.
I was thinking so too, but, um.
We can put him last.
Yeah. Best for last.
Well, I'd like to get out of here before dark.
Schedule.
Guys are scaring me.
I just wanna be sure we've had enough time to really look at the road and bridge stuff.
Well, he's at, he's at one forty-five and then I have the non-departmental at two thirty, but that, that's.
We can back those up.
Those can be backed up for as long as we need because there's nobody coming in for that. That's more like just.
That's just what we deal with, yeah.
He's got all the time he needs.
All right.
Wonderful. Okay, well then, uh, another kinda in the same neighborhood. Uh, we've had a request for no, uh, jake brake signs or no dynamic engine braking on two thirteen. Just east of the residence and just west of the residence, uh, for trucks going to Novita. Currently, I don't know of many that are going there, but I suppose sometime there would be. And that's just kind of an advisory thing. However, if you'd wanna make it official so that it could be enforced, it would take, uh, Terry's expertise to draw that up and then we would act on it. But I just wanted to bring it, uh, to your attention that that, um, could be coming. And if, if you want, we could work on that when, when you do the other one, uh, then. Uh, also, the project going on in Aurora where they're de-watering, uh, to put their lift station in, uh, is currently working. If you went by there, it's, it's pumping, uh, unbelievable quantities of water. Some of the neighbors have concerns and also, um, I think it's a very visible project. It isn't something that's, that's, um, just going on after dark or whatever, so. It isn't something that's, that's just going on after dark or whatever, so you might get calls or something in regards to that. That's what's happening over there. There's also, I had some calls about making the intersection of Twenty-second Avenue and Thirty-second Street South a four-way stop. And that would take your action also. If you remember from last meeting, Stephanie and I talked with Jackie with the city to see what their feelings were. Her general feeling was, when they looked at it, there was certainly not the criteria being met that would require a four-way stop. However, I don't think from her that she would be against it. I think she would just say that by their criteria, it doesn't indicate the need. And so if we move forward, that would be something that the board could initiate and do, obviously, and it's our road, so. It would be up to the board to decide what you wanna do there. So if there's any further discussion or whatever, that would be another thing that. Terry, you're gonna start throwing darts at my picture again.
Again?
So what's, I guess the board would have to decide.
Well, I think that's gonna warrant some more discussion, because Terry has looked into it a little bit, so. I guess I, I would. Maybe you, you wanna talk about your findings?
I did some research on it, and we've set a precedent where we've had the city involved in it, so we either have to decide if we are just gonna do it without the city, but in the past, we've always had city involvement in anything in the joint jurisdictional area. So. That's how we've done it in the past, and in doing some statewide research in joint jurisdictional areas, that's how most of the other counties have done it, so.
Okay. Well, we'll go back to the table and see if we can get some consensus on that item. Also, in the next meeting, I'm sure, at the very latest, Midary Township will be coming. They would like help with improvements to Two Hundred and Seventeenth Street for a two-mile stretch, and because of the bridge restrictions on highway, our Highway Twelve, that currently is a minimum maintenance road. So it's, especially with yesterday's rain, it doesn't take much rain, and it's a muddy mess. Also, it's very narrow, and also it's an area that's very susceptible to flooding. It's, it's, it's kind of a bad place, so I'll let them, you know, do their talking next two weeks, but just to give you the heads up that that, that will be coming. And lastly, I finished my traffic count on Highway Forty-six. If you remember last fall, an individual had asked for that, and I'd done one a year ago, and he indicated to me what the window of time would be for a substantial check on the true count of traffic. And in six weeks, we had a total of four thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight cars. That gives us a six-week daily average of a hundred and six vehicles. And a six, in the six weeks, the high count was a hundred and seventeen, and in six-week period, the low count for the day was seventy-nine. So it pretty much followed exactly what was happening a year ago, so it still is very low, considering, you know, his hopes was it was gonna be high enough that we would consider paving that first stretch. But it doesn't, so in case he comes back, that's what we did. So other than that, unless you have some questions, I'm pretty well done.
I guess the only thing, I have calls from up by the bridge project, from township supervisors, landowners, you have it. I had directed them all towards you. Could you get an idea of what they actually, they want five loads of gravel, or they want what, I mean, just for our future?
Yeah, I think they want the whole stretch gravelled. We have monitored that from the time we had the pre-construction meeting, because we knew already it was gonna be that way. There has not, what the township did is put spot gravel on the bad spots. And then nothing, so wherever there wasn't gravel, it's, it's getting muddy. Well, also, the other thing was, we bladed it completely at the start of the project, and it has not received any blading whatsoever, other than us, since then. And what we currently did was, where you first turn off of Highway Seven and go west, we bladed, not even to that first farm place, we just took care of the washboarding that was right by the stop sign for a safety thing. And then, when he'd get done with the alternate detour route, he would blade the end right off the Esteline oil. That, that's what we did, and we'd do it easily once a month, but that's what they want. They want more gravel, and they want us to shape it up for them.
Well, that's, I'm saying, I talked to township supervisors and the residents, they just kinda want the rocks and the hills covered, and township guy didn't give me an answer, and that's what I'm just kinda wondering what, what we're talking about out there, so.
Yeah, Jeff and I have been out there, matter of fact, we were just out there again last week, because we wanted to see the, the bridge deck is poured now. And every time we've been out there, it looks exactly the same as it was. And, and some of the neighbors are, you know, it's a bad road, but it's like a lot of the township roads.
Thank you, yeah, we're gonna nine forty-five.
We still need to set a, a date for the public hearing, too, but we could do our nine forty-five.
Move on to letter C, nine forty-five, presentation of George Dock and Post number two-one-one-eight, VFW and auxiliary certificate to County Development Director Bob Hill. Bob, can you come forward?
I'll just read what's on the certificate here. George Dock and Post number two-one-one-eight, VFW and auxiliary are honored to present this certificate to Brookings County Emergency Management Coordinator Bob Hill. You displayed compassion, concern, and commitment during the recovery of the Hill brothers. Your actions in service demonstrate your generosity and dedication to your community and citizens. I'd like to thank you.
Bob, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work that you did, and for your compassion and your caring for that family.
We have a couple minutes, we do have a nine fifty, so.
Do you wanna set that date for the, the five-year-plan public hearing? Did we want to do June twentieth, or did you wanna back it up to the eleventh? July eleventh is your next meeting after that? Do the Fourth of July holiday, it's on the second Tuesday in July.
I will be gone on the twentieth.
You'll be gone June twentieth?
Yes.
So July eleventh, that, does that, that still gives us enough time? Does everybody?
And that would give us a chance, we could actually see it in writing then on the.
On the twentieth? Okay, I'll work with that for publications.
Need more calendar. Okay, moving on to the letter D, nine fifty, presentation of executive proclamation recognizing May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen as Robert Hesch Day in South Dakota. I have a certificate to present to Robert, would you please come forward?
Executive proclamation, state of South Dakota, and this comes from the offices of the governor. Whereas Robert Bob Hesch has been a lifelong South Dakotan, having been born near Elpton, South Dakota in nineteen twenty-nine, and whereas Bob volunteered for the United States Marine Corps at the age of twenty-two, and served as an enlisted man in Korea during the Korean War from nineteen fifty-one to fifty-two, and whereas Bob returned to the United States, attending the United States Marine Corps Officer School, and was commissioned a second lieutenant, and whereas Bob served in the Republic of Vietnam as a field-grade officer, as a major, for which he was awarded the Bronze Star Medal with V, Attachment for Valor, retired from the United States Marine Corps as a colonel, and returned to live in Brookings County after serving his country for over thirty-one years. And whereas Bob was the lead individual for military funerals in Brookings County for thirty years, from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand sixteen, and whereas Bob is a local member of the American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the Disabled American Veterans, the Marine Corps League, and the Korean War Veterans Association. And whereas his loyalty and leadership have made him a cornerstone of this country, and it is, it is a privilege to honor his success, his sacrifice, and his service. And whereas it is fitting and proper, as governor, to commend Robert Bob Hesch for over sixty years of dedicated and outstanding service to this state, country, and South Dakota's veterans. Now, therefore, this is from Dennis Newgard, Governor of the State of South Dakota, do hereby proclaim May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, as Robert Hesch Day in South Dakota. And I join with his family and friends in thanking him for his service to the state of South Dakota and the United States of America.
This is a kind of a surprise, and I, I, I respect that, the silence that was encountered, but I, I appreciate this very, very much. Because of the people in South Dakota, I can assure you, it wasn't that hard to do this, so we got a record to hold up, and that's what I was doing, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we have a point of privilege between now and our next public hearing? Thank you. hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, it's 10 o'clock, and we have 10 a.m., Brenda Schweitzer, Executive Director of Beta, an overview of the public transit program for Brookings, South Dakota, and surrounding communities.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks for the invite and the chance to update you on what's happening with Beta. This is Travis Bortonum, and Travis is our Resource Development Director, jack-of-all-trades within our organization. I wanted to open too by thanking Ryan and formerly Larry as far as being our liaisons to our organization. It's just been a really good connection and keeping you informed, and I know that they're bringing back what's actually happening with our organization. So we want to thank both of you, as well as Dick and his crew out at the County Highway Department. I always tell people that we're in the gated community of the County Highway Department, so I know that things keep pretty busy, and they're good to us, and we try to be good stewards there. So this is just an update on where we're at. You know, we welcome any of you at any time to visit our facilities. I really encourage that. I know that a number of you have been out there. And then answer questions, so if we could do that. But just as an overview, this is what we wanted to tell you who we are and what we're all about. Since the last time we've visited with you, we have changed our hours of operation. We're Monday through Friday now, 5:00 a.m., to 11:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday is 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Safe Ride Program then runs Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays from 9:00 p.m. until 2:30, and that is in collaboration with SDSU. And so it's a grant on their end that we coordinate some of our, a limited amount of our grant funding to make this operation work. It transports around 20,000 students on an academic year, keeping them out of the courts and hopefully safe, making wise decisions. It's a coveted program from the Student Association, and those that use it appreciate it. So there has been some pressure of putting on a Thursday night bus as well, and we will see where that takes us. Currently, we have 37 employees, of which 14 are full-time. And just a little reflection and taking it back, 12 years ago, we had one full-time driver, three part-time drivers, my position was part-time, and then two little part-time dispatchers. So we've grown a lot, and you know, in reflection to that, what we've brought to the community as well. So as far as our funding goes, you know, it's a pool of money. You know, about 40% of our funding, 40, 42%, comes from a pool of money within the federal Highway Department. We know it as our 5311 money. And in order to tap into that, we have to match it locally. So those matching funds come from our fare revenue, Medicaid revenue. If an individual has Medicaid coverages, then what we do, we verify the coverage, and then we send claim to Medicaid for that transportation. And that can take them to any other covered provider, Medicaid-covered provider. It is a big source of our revenue, and also it is keeping those people as healthy as can be without lack of medical attention. So city, county, we have some state funding in which our agency has been very proactive in letting the state know that they hadn't upped us in over 10 years. So we did get a little, we did get a little bit for the state a few years ago, or actually this past year. United Way, we're very good advocates of the United Way, and they're good advocates of us, and we collaborate with a great majority of those other programs that they support as well. So that's what it's all about. Advertising on our buses, contracts such as with nursing homes, the Safe Ride is considered a contract. We work with SDSU on some day labor, some summer recreation programs such. So that's contracts. And then, and so that's all with the operating end. Our vehicles, update to software, computers, even maintenance on our facilities for the bigger items comes out of capital grants, and those we apply for. We put a justification out there on an annual basis, you know, as far as what we can proceed to see as our needs. They apply then at the state level to the feds, and it's kind of a crapshoot on what you're going to get. But we have been very fortunate in the last few years. You have to, you have to put it out there, and this is what the miles we're driving, these are the numbers we're serving, and our vehicles, you know, a few years ago, the average statewide, 90% of the fleet in public transit statewide had exhausted its transit life and yet was still out there. That has slowly evolved a little bit, and of course, that makes a difference on our bottom line. If we've got a vehicle that we're not dumping lots of our maintenance money into, so. So when it comes to our budget overall, our administrative costs are approximately, we have to match approximately 20% of our administrative costs, and that again is off of that 5311 formula. Whatever they say goes up there, which does include for us our insurance, so that's a big-ticket item. Operating costs, approximately 50% of our operating costs, of course, that's driver's wages, dispatch wages, fuel, maintenance, that comes in under that. Capital improvements, I just told you about that pot of money we have to apply for, we have to come up with 20% of that match. In 2016, for what had been granted to us in vehicle replacement and software updates, we had to come up with approximately another $72,000 in that 20% match, of which you contributed some of that through Match for a Bus last year. That's where that money went to. So our vehicles that we have available right now, 24 vehicles, one sedan, two non-accessible vans, six accessible vans, two sprinters, one has an ADA option. Sprinters, of course, are those little boxy FedEx. They don't qualify for Buy America. We can't get them anymore until that all changes, but they've been an efficient vehicle for us, and they've caused us a lot of heartburn and maintenance, but overall, their efficiency has been there. Two non-accessible buses, one's a big old used school bus we had purchased a few years back, and then 11 accessible buses. When we go to apply for vehicles out there, we just don't even, unless it's a rare situation, everything needs to be accessible. We probably transport approximately 50, 50...
Well, 50 passengers a day that require ADA lift or van, and so.
So, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to extend our hours of operation last year is if you were in a chair, a wheelchair, though really the roads rolled up at 6:00 at night because there was no accessibility, and that's not quality of life, and if you happen to be somebody that's working later hours, that affects that as well. So Beta was able to secure seven new vehicles in the 2015-16 year, and that's remarkable. That's unseen, truly. But we were also at the point that, I mean, we were putting them down as fast as, faster than we were replacing them, just because, you know, you can, you all know, you can put so much money into a vehicle before it's, you know, where's the limit? So. So those included three ADA vans, and four, 14 and two. When we call it 14 and two, it's 14 seats and two wheelchair positions. Replacing five buses and one ADA van is what those did. So each vehicle we have in the last few years included surveillance cameras in all of our vehicles. It has, it's proven to be rather interesting. It's protected our drivers, it's incriminated our drivers. We've had attorneys call and say, "What did you see on this?" Because we have. We've seen bicycles being hit, you know, not by us, but the forward-positioned camera has provided some interesting facts out there. So GPS tracking and video playback, so we can see where a vehicle's at, where they've been, how fast they're going, that type of thing. Two-way radio communication, and of course, as mentioned, you know, the County Commission supported the purchase of a bus the last two years, and that truly has helped us position ourselves where we're at. So this here just shows you some of our ridership data and where things have been. A couple of the peaks there showing you, 2004 is when we started on our Safe Ride Program, and then, yeah, we had the, the 2006 really showed a peak there. If you remember when the whole makeover was done around Toronto, we bust a lot of people up there just to see what was going on. That was the peak there. Every time somebody steps off of our vehicle, it constitutes a ride. That's all the data that is fed into the, to the state and into the feds, and it helps justify our program. But also, within that opportunity, within that opportunity, you're able to educate people on what public transit can be all about. Some of the dip there in, the dip there in some of that reporting actually came from the feds in how we reported. They took away some of the parameters that we could report, and it skewed things a little bit. It was really, it was really too bad. But there you can see, you know, we had a 26%, I think, increase in our ridership even just this last year. So we performed 147,462 one-way rides last year, and our fiscal year ended, the end of September. So the next slide just shows you what we're doing countywide, and some of these numbers, you know, we might be going Sinai, that's one that we've had an individual twice a day, and not just the one. We've had several of them from there. There's another one that lives around Sinai, but actually their address reads Volga, so it reflects in Volga's numbers. But that just goes to show you, you know, the extent of where we're at. A lot of these individuals out in this area that we're bringing in somewhere for work, probably a majority of them include dialysis, physical therapy. We've got some contract.
I would say a smaller portion is employment, but most of it is a medical transportation, where they just can't get to Brookings or Sioux Falls in any other way.
In the outlying Brookings County transportation, the demands just continue to increase. It's rather interesting to see how they do that. They have figured out too, you know, that we do a $20, $20 round trip to Sioux Falls three times a day, and so it might be such that they come into Brookings, go down, and then we end up getting them home as well. So that change in our organization came about last April, is when we started the three round trips to Sioux Falls, and by and large, it's for medical transportation. It's not to take people out of town. I mean, people that are taking the bus do not go out of town to shop. They just don't. They might make a travel connection. Grandma might go down and see some little one's school program, that type of thing. So that's where that comes into play. Marty has used us quite a bit for transporting, so we, just whatever the needs are, we're not, we're not limited. Just got to work with the program in itself. Travis, can you think of anything that I'm missing? We just really appreciate and could not do the job we do without the support of Brookings County. We're proud to be able to say we serve you, and we serve the people. I think we do a pretty fair job. You know, we've always got something on our plate. We're limited, as any other federal program with regulations, and you can, we'd like to be able to do a lot more, but honestly, some of those limitations come into place. Again, welcome questions, and invite you all, I know several of you have been to our facilities, but I do invite you to see how we operate.
Mr. Chair, I would like to thank you for all you do for our communities all in Brookings County. We are so fortunate to have public transportation. This is, it's just outstanding because so many places do not have this, and what would those people do that come every day for medical issues and have to go to Sioux Falls? So thank you for your hard work, for expanding your hours. I'm very pleased that your ridership has increased. We are just very fortunate to have you. Thank you.
Just second, Marty?
Yeah, I just want to thank Beta publicly too, is that they've helped us out on several occasions, as Brenda talked about, individuals that are homeless that sometimes when they get out of jail, they have no place to go, and we just don't have the facilities, or they're transient, and going three times a day, they're always willing to go pick the person up. Wherever the transient's at, he might be at a gas station or whatever, and they'll pick him up and take him to Sioux Falls. They've also through, have taken an individual that was homeless that got out of the hospital to Lake Norden on one occasion, because the nursing home there would take this person and stuff, so Beta transported that person, and that's putting a lot of pressure on them too. They're not in ambulance, but the person was okay to travel, so I appreciate those types of things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think so. Unless she gets something else. Moving on to regular business. Discussion and possible action to approve malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license renewals for licensing year July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. I believe we do these individually?
You can do them as one motion.
Okay.
Move approval?
Got a motion of second. Letter I was Danceland Campground. Two is Metal Creek Golf Club. Three is Brookings Country Club. Four is Skyview Junction. Norgard and Norgard LLC Boathouse at Arlington Beach Resort. Smoke and Pub and Grub. RJ's Gas Stop. And Wagon Wheel Resort. Got a motion of second, any discussion?
Sheriff, any concerns on any of these?
No, I don't have any concerns at this point on anyone that you're mentioning.
One question. Wagon Wheel?
Rebuilt.
Rebuilt.
Yes, they're in the process of rebuilding that facility now.
They already have.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So I knew they were trying to be open by the holiday weekend, but, yep.
They're up and running.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, discussion, possible action to approve a request made by the Elkton Special Days Committee for $500 for the annual fireworks displayed for the City of Elkton.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion of second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
and Associates Incorporated for structure number oh-six dash one-six-nine dash two-three-eight.
Move approval?
Got a motion of second, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to approve agreement number seventeen dash thirty-three. A work order for consulting services between Brookings County and Banner and Associates Incorporated for the 2017 bridge inspections.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion of second, any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action to approve agreement number seventeen dash thirty-four. An American Institute of Architects agreement between Brookings County and Borman Cruise Vogel Group, Inc., for the Brookings County Detention Center Expansion Project.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion of second, any discussion?
This is the architects that we have been using, BKV Group, that have done all of the preliminary work on the jail expansion project to this point. And I've also included their certificate of liability insurance was in front of you this morning. They got that to me after the packet had already gone out, so. Any other questions?
Is there cost, was it budget or what?
The seven-point-four percent of the total project costs, Bruce Schwartzman had given me some other examples, and that's really right in line with what other projects have been for the percentage.
Nope. Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, action to declare items as surplus property to be disposed of via the online auction process.
Move approval?
Second.
Do we have a list? Any questions? Hearing none, call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G, discussion on the three-mile joint jurisdiction with the city of Brookings. Leanne, kind of brought this to my attention, like to have a discussion on the three-mile.
I think we are at a point in our ordinance revision, and we're, the county has finished our comp plan, the city is getting, moving forward on theirs, and there's conversation now going on in the community regarding joint jurisdiction. And I wondered if perhaps we could have a committee put together to look at the joint jurisdiction ordinance and with the city, we need to do it with the city, and that maybe as layers on to planning and zoning, I'd be willing to serve on that committee, and I think we should have another commissioner on there if that worked for you. Then maybe two people from the city council and Bob Hill and maybe the city's planning and zoning person, Mike Struck. And then maybe that committee, once they met the first time, could decide what other types of expertise they would need on the committee. I think there might be some interest in, and I think we should have somebody from a township in the joint jurisdiction, at least one person from a township, and maybe somebody that works with development and maybe somebody from utilities. When I give my report, I'm going to tell you that Steve Meyer had asked for me to come in and have a conversation regarding utilities, and they'd be interested in maybe having somebody on that committee. But I think the committee could come up with those additional members if you all were saying, let's move forward, we start talking about joint jurisdiction and looking at our ordinance and seeing if we need to make any changes, and if so, what they would be.
The committee's findings will be used towards the ordinances then?
To eventually amend the joint jurisdiction ordinance for both the city and the county.
Just a comment on that. You know, obviously, the city has put together committees, and they've generally put together some sort of a charter with the direction of the committee and how they should report and what the end results when it's hopefully finished. Sometimes these takes on a life of their own, but at the same time, if we're going to do this, we need to establish exactly the parameters, what we expect the committee to achieve. Just a thought process, similar to the mental health task force, had a charter together. And then the appointed members.
You're right. We definitely have issues in the joint jurisdiction that everybody points fingers at everybody else, and nothing gets accomplished when there's a problem out there. And that needs to be addressed and taken care of when our ordinances are done. I mean, I have examples. So, that's right, Mike, we do need to.
The question is, is it a committee or a task force? If we're going to be the lead on putting it together, such as the city was the lead on their mental health task force, it was their charter. Would this be our charter?
I guess, Leanne, what?
Dan Hansen and I, Dan kind of did the draft on that, and then I looked at it, and then we both brought it back to our respective boards and moved forward on that. That's what we did on that. If we wanted something more formal of that nature, maybe we could have Stacy start a document. I'd be happy to have some input on it and bring it back at our next meeting, if that's what you'd like to see.
Because I think all, I mean, probably all the city commissioners and all of us as county commissioners have concerns within the three-mile jurisdiction.
And it'd be nice if we're going to do something formal in writing like that, if you had some of those, if we could say them now so that Stacy would know to put them in, because what that mental health one did is said, these are the things that we're going to look at. Okay? Now, that did specifically lay out who would be the members. I mean, not the individuals, but it did lay out what the makeup is, and if you want that done, if you have some ideas other than what I just said.
Well, I think part of that three-mile joint jurisdiction is future planning, expansion of city limits, and housing and development, utilities all has to go involved in that type of area there, along with the, who has control or say over complaints and zoning issues and that kind of stuff, too, is another.
Infrastructure issues, I mean, you got, is it city road, county road, is it a private, all those? And who's going to be, who's going to be taking care of those?
One of the things I think we need to be cognizant of is the fact that the city already has a planning service for their next comprehensive plan, and part of that will include suggestions on the three-mile joint jurisdictional area. And so, you know, this can't be accomplished until that document sort of takes shape that we can take a look at it, because I don't think we have any input on their particular other than the interviews that we've all had on joint jurisdiction or any other planning within the county or the city. So, you know, it's kind of a parallel track to what they're doing. So it might help us to get this started sooner than later so that we can have that committee's input into that planning document that they're putting together. If we want to have some impact, that would be the appropriate time to do it, not after the fact.
Well, if you want to talk about some examples, one perfect example is that intersection at Thirty-second and Twenty-second. And it will never, ever meet the city's criteria, and yet, we all know that that is a very dangerous intersection, which has become more dangerous as our traffic has increased due to construction and due to the fact that Thirty-Fourth is so nice. We built a nice little superhighway there. And so when we, out in the county, know that we have a dangerous intersection, we deal with it. But here, we'll never meet the criteria, and when Dick and I talked to Jackie, she was very hesitant. I said, well, what if the county went ahead and just put up stop signs and made it a four-way stop? Oh, we better talk to our attorneys. Well, I did, you know, and I don't necessarily, now, I'm not an attorney, but I don't necessarily agree that we set a precedence when we did the South Main and Thirty-second. And I agree with you on that, and I wonder if maybe Terry wouldn't want to do a little more research on that. The only reason I say that, I would have said it when Dick was here, but we ran out of time, without specifically looking, there's a statute right on point on, out in the county, who gets to determine on those stop signs. And even if it's in the three-mile? I think so, but that's what I don't know. But I think there's a statute that's right on point on this. But I didn't look at that myself before I came today, so. But traffic control should be one of the issues. Absolutely. That the committee works out in the process in our ordinance for traffic control.
And include all within the three-mile, and then not pick and choose which intersection because we did Thirty-Fourth Avenue and changed some stop sign deals.
Yes.
The city was not involved with those.
No, we put a four-way stop there.
Right. I mean, that's.
But the process, though, you know, I think putting this committee together to be able to make some recommendations to us and to the city of how we manage this three-mile joint jurisdiction for expansion and for enforcement, I think is important. So, and maybe it's going to be a joint board that lives on, you know, is created in the joint jurisdiction area when a problem comes up. A zoning board or joint zoning board or something like that between the two that if somebody wants to put a development up there, it goes to the joint zoning board. If somebody has an issue with stop signs, it goes to the joint, you know, zoning board, that there's discussion, because what I, we have to work together in this. We can't just turn around and start putting buildings out here and putting stop signs here, and then the city comes in and has this huge problem because we've been developing the way we want to and not the way it needs to. So it has to be a joint effort and a collaboration between everybody involved in this, in this three-mile area. And again, it's not necessarily three miles, that's just the word they're using. It's not a three-mile circle.
Less than that now.
It's less than that now, and we'll have to discuss five miles out. We'll have to identify areas of stuff, but, you know, I don't want to get into the, when we did that four-way stop, we went through the justification, we did through the process, we vetted it, we got the city and us to go together. I think that's important, to be able to continue to do that and have that discussion. I don't want to start throwing stuff up just because they don't go with it. We got to have an area or place to have that discussion and make that decision.
But we still have a very dangerous intersection. You know, I think we need, and I agree that maybe that's the answer, because then the city doesn't point their finger at us, and we don't point our finger at the city. Maybe if we had that board, that would be a better option. But I also don't, I agree, we need to work with the city, there's no doubt about it, but I also don't feel like, I mean, the criteria that the city goes by would, we would never have a stop sign anyplace here. If you looked at traffic count, I mean, Chicago would barely meet it in most of their intersections. It's ridiculous. And so, you know, the only reason that we got it on South Main and Thirty-second was a site problem, when we don't have that here. So, you know, some common sense has to be involved in those decisions, and.
There's two paths here that this has to take. One is the joint jurisdictional area has ordinances written already, but it pertains to particularly zoning. It really doesn't address stop signs or speed limits or anything else. So what you're asking to do is to incorporate that into a planning document and zoning, and it doesn't fit there, okay? Neither on the city side nor on the county side. So what you're asking is to actually form some sort of a committee after this committee would look at the ordinance structure and putting together speed limits, putting together drainage, putting together some other things. But again, that's not in existence. That's just a cooperative effort that we try and go after once in a while. So you can't change the planning document for zoning by throwing in all these other things.
But I think that one of the goals of this organization, one of the objectives, would be to look at the joint jurisdiction ordinance and to see what if any revisions would be recommended, and if there would be something that's recommended that's outside planning and zoning, so be it. But I think this group could come up with that recommendation. We don't have to decide that maybe at this point.
No, I don't have a problem with putting it together, just understand it takes a couple of different paths.
Right.
When you get done with this document, it could be, or this committee, you could have one on zoning and one on ordinances that might be appropriate. So a lot of work could go into that, to be honest with you. It could take us a considerable amount of time, because if you decide to do the ordinance one, you need to have some public hearings on those types of things.
Exactly.
So you're looking at a year-long program of any sort whatsoever, which doesn't address Steph's concern, Commissioner Miller's concern about an immediate stop sign, and I think that's something we just need to continue a conversation with the city on. And I don't know, Dick, where you got with the state transportation DOT as far as a temporary sign, did they have any conversation with you on whether they would throw one up as part of their project?
I talked to John Ritterhouse, and he definitely didn't want to participate temporarily or permanently, just.
Okay. I wouldn't expect he would permanently, but.
And frankly, I'm not interested in temporary.
Well.
Because I think that causes more problems than.
Trying to get the immediate, so. Anyway, I think you should go ahead and look at developing a charter, Stacy, of some sort, with Commissioner's help, as far as all of us, as far as who should be involved with it. And I think you get a good start on who should be involved, and then bring it back next meeting, and let's look at it. We need to have a conversation with the city also to make sure that they'd like to participate, and I'm sure that they would. Sure they would.
And I did ask that, by the way. I sat next to the mayor at something a few days ago and said that this was on our agenda, and he also is chairing the city master plan comprehensive review process, and yes, he's interested in moving this forward, so.
So at this time, we'll wait till next meeting to formally?
Right, and let Stacy maybe come up with something we can look at that we could then pass. Do we need a resolution, or do we just, I can't remember how we do this particular thing. If we want to do a committee, we just have a consensus on that?
Okay. Moving on, Commission Department Director Report.
Discuss some of the stuff that's already on my report. We set the public hearing date, it's July 11th, for the five-year plan. Included with my report were the grant notices that we received on the major rehabilitation and the preservation grants that we received through the Big Grant Project. Just more as a reference to bring them to your attention, I included copies of the ordinances that the county has adopted over the years. Well, first was the four-way stop, and I had brought that up when we were discussing that just a little bit ago. And then also the ordinances regarding the wheel tax. I know that was some, there was some discussion on that at the last meeting about possibly implementing that last dollar that we are eligible to implement, based on the criteria necessary to get some of these big grants. So those ordinances are included with my report. You want us to start moving in that direction, you know, to do that, you know, let us know, and I could work with Terry on getting an ordinance drafted. The general fund surplus history, as Vicki had noted, that we were at about forty-five percent here at the end of April, and that history is included with my report. The annual CDI golf outing is coming up in August. Register for that by the second. And then the chamber mailed out some information on this Business Expo Brookings coming up in October, and this is replacing the Think Local Showcase event that we've had a table at. I did have that discussion, and the county with our chamber membership is eligible to have a table at this event now in October as well, so we'll work in that direction, you know, do something similar to what. So, we'll work in that direction, you know, do something similar to what we've done in the past. But that's, that's a change at the, the chambers level, that they changed that event to be a little bit different. I also set in front of you some, a notice, a Public Utilities Commission notice on an upcoming hearing that they're doing. I'm a big packet of information there. I also shared that with Bob. Also in front of you today, kind of along with the BKV's insurance liability information, was the Board of Adjustment Application for Variance for the project. BKV submitted that, and they said that they would do that on, you know, on our behalf even prior to having that contract in place. They were willing to get that piece of it started since our, our waiting period had passed for the resolution that we, the bonding resolution that was referable. Nobody referred that to a public vote. That time has come and gone. So, they went ahead and submitted this application. And, and they're going to submit the, the fee, the $125 fee, and we'll reimburse them for that. But now that we're working with them, I'll be in touch with Bruce probably later today even to keep moving things forward. June 6th is our next meeting, and we hope to have the budget books to you by then. And then the, the budget hearings, as a reminder, we set those for June 13th and 14th. On June 13th, the Tuesday, it's going to be an all-day, 8:30 to 5:00. And then, then Tuesday, or Wednesday, the 14th, pardon me, is going to be 8:30 to noon. And in reserving rooms, this room was not available for those times. So, we're going to be next door in the community room. So, just kind of just around the tables there. I think it will work out just fine for those hearings. So, just so you know that, that we'll get agendas and, and things posted too. But we won't be here. We'll be next door in the community room. And I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
I guess I have one question. What, you know, the dollar amount, if we implemented the extra dollar wheel tax, what impact on the vehicles being licensed?
Vicki might have.
I think it's about 60,000. That's just a rough estimate.
But I mean, like, an individual with a semi, for example, what would be the dollar amount more they would have to?
You can do up to eight wheels. And that would be, you know, if you do the five wheels, you would also, if you want to do more than four wheels, you would have to incorporate that also into your resolution. And I can do some checking. I'm not sure we really have statistics on how many semis, but we can look at the trucks and make at least an estimate on if we would include all wheels. I can get that to you for the next meeting.
But we can do anywhere from four to eight?
Yes.
So, but if we, so it could be just $4 impact to the owner of the vehicle then?
Right. But you can also go from $4 a wheel to $5.
Yep, okay.
So, and that would be about the 60,000.
Right? If we raised it from four to five, and then the max is eight wheels, is eight bucks basically per vehicle, would be the charge.
Yes.
So, per person on a vehicle-
I thought it could be $4.
No. We already have a $4, should be an additional $1.
Yep, $1.
So, the raise would cost a max person for a truck, eight bucks.
If we went to eight wheels.
Right. But Vicki said you can do from four wheels to eight wheels.
Right.
Per wheel, see what I'm saying?
Yeah. But it's only a buck raise.
Right. It's a dollar raise.
Yeah. So, it costs a person with a larger than eight-wheel trucks eight, eight bucks more than what they're paying right now.
Correct. But if we only, if we raised it the dollar, Dick, this is a question for you. And we only put it on four wheels as opposed to eight, are we going to get dinged in our, our numbers game by the DOT? Because we can't do eight wheels. We can't add the dollar on eight wheels. But if we added the dollar on only four?
Right. That's what I was saying.
Would we get dinged?
Yeah. Well, we have to have, the only, the only thing the state is interested in is the vehicles over 6,000 pounds, or 6,000 pounds and over.
Right.
So, that's where you get the additional wheel. They don't care how much you charge per wheel necessarily. They just want to make sure you're taxing-
If we have the $5, then we're at the maximum, and that's all they care about.
Right.
Well, no, there, if, if you're taxing even $1 on the vehicles over 6,000 pounds, that's enough to give us the maximum amount of points we can get for bridges. If, if we're looking to use it as a revenue, I, I've got this in my budget report too. But if, if you're looking at this additional money as being a giant boost in revenue, it's not going to be it. But the value, if we want to make the maximum amount of points we possibly can, it's, it's very important.
Right. That's what I was, I'm not trying to increase license fees extremely. I just would like to make sure we're sitting in line with the state's guidelines and get maximum points for our bridge program. That's just a question I had, so.
One last thing too, before I finish up. I had noted on the upcoming dates, the Safety Week activities coming up next week. Everything's at 3 o'clock, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. The fire drill, the lockdown drill, and the severe weather drill. Do any of you, I know a couple of you are planning to come to participate in the lockdown drill. Were any of you coming to participate in the fire drill or the severe weather drill those days? No?
We'll see. 3 o'clock Tuesday, 3 o'clock Wednesday, and 10 o'clock?
No, three, they're all at 3 o'clock.
About 3 o'clock.
Oh, the, the fire extinguisher's at 3 o'clock, not at 10?
Fire extinguisher is at 10, yeah. Some of those are at 10. But the, the drills are all at 3 o'clock.
And, and if I can, I'm planning on coming for the fire drill on Tuesday and the lock, I'll be here with Terry anyway for the lockdown drill on, on Wednesday. And I was going to go to the fire extinguisher training.
Okay. Are you? Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Well, if you get shot, I'll feel bad for you, but you aren't going to know what to do.
Jump behind you. Jump behind you.
Moving on to number 10, Deputy State's Attorneys' Report.
To my right, we have Paige Peterson. She'll be interning with our office. She's just finished her first year at USD Law. So, she has been shadowing our office and will be working on many projects for us. As Marty said, we just continue to be busy. I think Abby has 22 items on the Circuit Court calendar this afternoon. So, she'll probably be in court till 7:00 or 8:00 tonight. But other than that, working on ordinances with LeAnn, Bob, and Richard, and just treading water, so.
LeAnn?
On May 2nd, I attended the County Planning and Zoning Meeting. We had 11 agenda items that night, three conditional use permits, and had not, one of the applicants asked that their two matters be tabled. We would have, we would still be in that meeting, I think. We, we went until almost 11 o'clock, pretty close 10:30 when we were done, I think. But, but one of the things that we maybe need to look at, again, at our administrative roles, our new ones, is how quickly we have to put things on if we can't control that agenda just a little bit better because of the numbers of things. But of course, when people bring in their applications, you don't know if nobody's interested or if 150 people will be interested. So, that's hard to, to know in advance, so. But that was a, an interesting meeting. On May 4th, I attended the mayor's volunteer reception. We had on May 4th also a special executive session for planning and zoning to meet with the legal counsel on some of the issues that are currently in litigation. And then on May 9th, I had received, and I know Commissioner Bartley got a similar call, a call from Steve Meyer at Utilities, asking if I would be interested in coming out and, and talking and just seeing how they do their funding and how, if we're looking at joint jurisdiction issues, maybe utilities play a part in that. And I attended that meeting. I learned a lot. And I don't know if you all would be interested or not. But I said, "I think this is something maybe the whole commission would be interested in hearing. And if, if you all are, I think it would be worthwhile to invite him to come talk to us sometime at a meeting." Because what he had to say was interesting and, and how his funding gets set up and what they can and can't do and all of that. It was, it was a good meeting. Then on May 10th, met with Bob and Terry. And we went through the first run on the natural resource ordinance from our group. The subcommittee had already submitted their stuff. We came away with some questions, and I think Terry's working on getting us some additional information. And we'll be looking at natural resources again to get that ready to, to go back to the full planning and zoning board. I was at the Board of Regents' Reception on May 10th. And that, that, I think, was where I sat next to the mayor and talked about joint jurisdiction issues. And then last night, had a meeting with the city as the county liaison on the City Master Comprehensive Advisory Committee. They had their first report from their consultant on where things are looking. Eventually, I think some of the population numbers that they're looking at would be interesting to come in front of us and to see. And they had our, the county estimated population was like 46,000. And I said, "I don't think that number's right based on what we did, and they need to go back and do some more work on that." So, but it, but it will be interesting to see their numbers as they come forward, and they are moving along. That would be my report.
Commissioner Bartley?
All right. Well, I think you covered most of mine. May 4th, I did attend the mayor's reception. That was mayor-elect at that point. And now he's the mayor, Mr. Corbett. On the 11th, I met with, my first meeting with County Board of Health. The landfill is in good shape. They've actually compacted trash to a point where they'll be able to extend the life of that for probably another 30 years on top of what they had originally planned. So, they got some major purchases with equipment out there, but they always have money set aside for that. So, they're in really good financial shape as far as the landfill is concerned. They gave a report on the city's cleanup and paint exchange project. And the numbers were similar to last year's, and very well-received in the community as far as how many people brought things out to the landfill to dispose of it. And they always give all their paint away that they get in. So, once again, they gave away all their paint as, as they mixed it. Also, on the 12th, I met with Mr. Myers and same conversations that Commissioner Pierce had with Steve on their plans and how they look at things a little differently than we sometimes look at things as far as utility expansion is concerned. On the 15th, yesterday, we had a Decentral Board of Behavioral Health, a board meeting. At that meeting, we were given the June of '15 to '16 audited report. It was a little bit late, actually quite a bit late. The auditors had a personnel problem that was doing the report that had to, while it left. And in the middle of that audit, another person took over. So, it took a lot longer than I'd like to have seen to get that audited report, but it did show up. All right. Then also yesterday, the Mental Health Task Force had a meeting scheduled at noon. There was not a quorum, so the, the meeting was canceled. And the next one is scheduled for June 19th, and that's completion of my report.
All right. Had a slow couple of weeks here. Did, on May 4th, the mayor's appreciation reception, which was very nice. And then on May 10th, I attended a lead-up roundtable meeting at Daktronics and talked about, gave a presentation on affordable housing. So, that's about it.
On May 2nd, I, with Dick, went down and discussed with the city engineer the stop sign on 22nd and 32nd. On May 9th, I had a weed board meeting. We're still looking for a weed enforcement officer, although we may be a little bit closer to getting one. On May 12th, we had an executive session for joint powers. And I would definitely like to hear from Utilities. I think that is a great opportunity to build a relationship and understand how they work.
On the 4th, one, also went to the mayor's reception. Like I said, it was well-attended. And on the 5th and 6th, I, then it wasn't a commission deal, but I attended all the graduation ceremony at campus, got that done with. On the 10th of May, went to the Board of Regents' Reception on McCory Gardens. Had a, from a board member, Sutton, he, he complimented us on the city of Brookings and the county on this building right here. He was very impressed with it and how everything came together with two entities. He was really impressed with it. On the 11th, I had a pandemic preparedness coordination committee meeting at the East Fire Station. We had a pod plan presentation by Joanne Paulson. She is coordinated, she coordinates within this region plans for each communities if we would have an outbreak to vaccinate people or whatever we'd need to do. Some of the new business that came up, they give an update on like bird flu, the flu, whatever. If there's anything in the area, nothing was noted. But there was one case a month reported within Brookings here. So, that's all I have. Anybody, anything to add? Not that, like, go into that executive session at 11 o'clock here in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses, "for" contract negotiations.
Second?
Motion is second. All those in favor?
All right.